Good evening, everyone. It's five o'clock. Thank you all for being here to this. I guess this is the first meeting of the Temple City Council for 2024. Twenty-five? That's right. I call Susan Susan Love sometimes instead of Susan Law. So please rise as we'll have the invocation led by Pastor Darren Pound with the pledge by Liz Caraway.
Maybe before I pray, is there any specific prayer requests that I could pray with you about this evening?
Always for our public safety folks, police and fire. Thank you.
Father, thank you for this amazing day that you've blessed us with. Thank you for the privilege of this great country and this great city. Pray, Lord, that you would continue to pour out your blessings upon us, lead us, guide us, direct us in paths of righteousness for your name's sake, as your word declares. I pray, oh God, for our first responders, for our police, our fire, our, our medical technicians that, that are on the front lines and, and making a difference in our community all across our state and our country, our world. Pray especially for those that are impacted by these fires in California. They, these situations weigh heavy on our hearts. And ask God that you would just be with them in a very special way. Be with our leadership, be with our elected officials. We ask God that you would bless them. Bless them with wisdom and insight, give them compassion and direction to, to know and do your will. And as, oh God, we, we seek to strive to, to honor you in everything that is said and done in this city and in these meetings, I pray that you would just give us a sense of your abiding peace in everything that is said and done. We are again thankful for this time, for this gathering, for these individuals, and for this great city of Temple in Christ's name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge for the U.S. flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you both very much. Thank you, Mr. Pound. I don't think that anyone's ever actually asked us for a prayer request. Much appreciated. Next item is public comments, and we have no one that has signed up for public comments tonight. So we'll move right into the next section, which is to receive the annual report from the Temple Economic Development Corporation. Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. So good to be before you this afternoon on a, in a January of 2025. I don't know about you all. I do work closely with the, the city team and city staff, and I know it already feels like the first quarter has run by us that things are moving so quickly in these first couple of weeks, which really bodes well for, for Temple and the, the community. As per our contract, we come by and, and we give an annual report on our activities and we really appreciate. We really appreciate the, the partnership with the city of Temple, and we're pleased to report on our last fiscal year's activities. The items of note, as some of you are aware, Mayor Pro Tim, Jessica Walker, as well as Mayor you and, and city staff sit on our board and their, where are our activities? There's a lot going on. There's a lot we can report on, but for the sake of time, we just want to give a few highlights on fiscal year twenty-four. So just as a reminder for the, for the public to know, we're a small but mighty team, a private not-for-profit corporation led by myself, but we also have our Vice President of Business Development, Mr. Tom Long, Bridgette Heinz Weber, who's just came onto our a team as the Director of Business Engagement, who handles all of the support and all of the conversations and communications with our existing industry to take care of them. Then also Jennifer Avery, our Director of Operations, who handles a lot of our economic development agreement, agreement compliance and kind of keeps us going here there in the office. And we would not be the group that we are with the success that we'll report on without a strong leadership group. I've already mentioned Mayor, your leadership, Mayor Pro Tim, and then also our City Manager, Bren Myers, representing the city on our, our Board of Directors, but also a number of folks from the community who've been here in Temple for a very long time that represent very strong business acumen and support and strategic vision for our community, and they're all in a service-oriented capacity. And one of the things I really appreciate about the makeup of this board, it is quite diverse in its background and also its representation of different businesses, whether it's the financial sector, whether it's Baylor Scott and White, whether it's small business, they're all represented here and, and of course, the city team as well. You know, our mission, our vision is quite simple. You know, we are primary job focused, and so our, our desire is to grow primary jobs in our community, number one. I'm a product of, of what I think I would consider a lower middle-class family growing up. And we were only that because my dad had a job. He had a job at Alcoa Aluminum Plant in Point Comfort, Texas, and spent about thirty years there. And because of his opportunity to have a living wage through that job, it provided a lot of opportunities for myself and my brother and gave us a vision and gave us a goals and gave us an opportunity in the life that he did not have. And so the work that we do every day in partnership with the city is all about that, is creating a job and, and through the creation of that job, a quality of life, a quality of standard that maybe is a little bit better than the generation before. So that's what this is about at, at, at the whole. There's a lot of contracts and a lot of numbers we'll throw at you, but it's really about serving the city of Temple and its citizens through our primary job recruitment activity. And then our vision is, is to practice excellence in, in everything we do. We, as the Temple EDC, have the distinct pleasure and benefit and also the blessing to be able to be the open door to Temple for a lot of investors from not only around the nation, but globally. And so we do not take that lightly. We take that very seriously, and we appreciate that opportunity to do that on behalf of the city of Temple. So looking at some numbers, as we get into just some objective data, again, I mentioned our, our goal and our job is to grow tax base. That means the number of people who are paying taxes in the way of industry in our community, and then also to grow those primary jobs in those primary sectors. And so as we look at the tax base and the growth, the, the growth that we've seen year over year, you look at twenty-three to twenty-four, eight percent increase in taxable valuation. And then when you look at the reinvestment zone, which is primarily comprised of our industrial park, there are other areas in the reinvestment zone, but we got a, a large part of it in our industrial park, sixty, sixty percent increase in the last five years. And so we think that's quite significant. That's what help pays for police and fire and roads and streets and water, sewer, all those things there. And then also we've seen some increase in, in sales tax, which is a big revenue generator for the city of Temple. Jobs are growing as well in our community. When you consider our population in our community relate, in relation to the larger Temple metro area, you know, we're the second largest city, but we really lead the way among all cities in our region with respect to job creation. You see some of the numbers there. You see the increase, increase in average wage there. Obviously, that's happened because of economic factors and since COVID, everybody's paying a little bit more to have good help. But it also is a strategic vision, a strategic goal of our Board of Directors in this community to create higher wage jobs for our citizenry as well. And we've seen that reflected in some of the projects that we've worked as well. Again, I'm amazed at how these numbers continue to grow with respect to our population and, and what's happening in our region. This is not, I, I got here six years ago, but from those I talked to from ten years ago, who lived here twenty years, who've lived here thirty, forty years, this is not the same Temple that it was with respect to population. There are a lot of eyes, not to use a UT, a euphemism, eyes on Texas, eyes on Temple right now with respect to investors. And so we're seeing a lot of growth that comes from that. Latest data says we're about ninety-seven thousand in population, but I'll point to a demographic study that was done in two thousand and twenty-three. Zonda Education really says if you look at estimates, you look at our growth pattern, probably today we sit at around just over a hundred thousand people in, in our population. I think as folks get stopped at the stoplight on West Adams and on Thirty First, they recognize there's a little bit more traffic than there was five years ago here in Temple. So as we take a look at those numbers and that growth, it really is a, a special time in the trajectory of our community. And, and we're trying to capitalize on it by getting around and talking to a number of different industries, a number of different decision makers within various, varied industries to tell the Temple story and hopefully create opportunities for us. So here on this slide, and again, I know you got, y'all have a copy of this report, but you, you'll see the number of places we've been, our Vice President of Business Development has been very, very active and, and on the road. I assist him on a lot of these recruitment trips. We've been busy telling the Temple story. And so that has resulted in a lot of traffic and a lot of eyes on Texas as I, or eyes on Temple, excuse me, as I mentioned. You look at what has been drawn in the way of attention to our website on the investment attraction side, twenty-one thousand website visits and FY twenty-four, and you see our above-average engagement rate. We really are exceeding the benchmark there for our digital engagement rate. And then our workforce attraction, which has seen a change. Just in October, we moved from a meet Temple brand to a live work in Temple brand, which we're really excited about, and that offers an opportunity for small businesses as well as large businesses to try to connect with a, a number of employees or potential employees that are looking at the area to work in the area. And that just launched in October, but you can see a lot of activity with respect to our workforce and talent attraction program. So as we think about successes, just a couple I wanted to highlight here, very different projects altogether, but in total, a hundred and twenty-two million dollars in total in, uh, investment announced this past fiscal year and a hundred and twenty-four new jobs announced as related to those investments. That said, you'll see an asterisk there, or report and happy to report to the council that we actually have contracted with about two-plus billion dollars of capital investment. And when I say contracted, I mean, it, the Economic Development Agreement has been signed. They have shared interest in our community, but they're undergoing a lot of due diligence. We don't count those as actual projects announced, but it does indicate some activity that is taking place in the marketplace, folks who are doing studies and diligence on our area. So it's quite significant. And so our, our significant, or one of the most significant announcements that we had this past year is SEI Super Alloy Technologies. This is a Korean steel mill project from South Korea in the aerospace and aviation industry. And so they make high-value parts that go into the planes that we fly in and also into the aerospace industry that's, that's going into orbit. And so we're very excited about this company. One of the things I've really appreciated about this company is the culture that lies within. And some of you have had an opportunity, leadership in the community have had an opportunity to engage them. And I think one of the telling moments for us is when we had that groundbreaking, or at least for me, we had the groundbreaking ceremony, and we had the president, the CEO from Korea in our community, and he made some comments, and he talked about being a child and remembering the stories after the Korean War and remembering how US came to aid and support and the story there and what it meant to him and the fact that he now is helping or did help lead the decision in making an investment. Their first manufacturing US investment in Temple, Texas was really special to him, and that's a touching story. It speaks to the level of culture and background and, and really the familial type of attitude they have about this investment and partnering with our community. And I know some of you around the table could express and share your stories about your engagement with them. We were happy and pleased that they were just in town two days ago, and they shared their most recent renderings. And I told them, you know, some of their, their team is, is, their leadership team is located in Michigan. I said, it looks like a hot rod with that hot orange and reddish-orange flavor there and the sleek designs in the building, but it really is intended to be a world-class facility. Because this, this is their first US manufacturing facility, they anticipate that it will get a lot of world eyes on it. A lot of their customers were not only in the US but also overseas. They'll be hosting here, and so they want to do a really, really fine job on the aesthetic of this building, and I think will be a wonderful addition to our industrial park. These are some renderings of the inside. Again, a really open, really contemporary, modern-looking space, well-lit and is intended to be a welcoming, really first-class welcoming area to guests that come through there. For frame of reference, and, and I'd kind of like to put this map up because it shows all the progress that we've done out in this particular area of town and, and in our industrial park over the last few years, but they're located in the kind of grayed-out block there, and they have started construction or at least moving dirt, earthwork here in the last week. But that gives you an idea of where they're situated there off of Winland Road, next door to East Penn Battery and across the street there from Niagara and just south of the Outer Loop. And there's some of the team playing with the tractor just this past week. And so they were having a good time knocking down trees and, and starting that earthwork. So the project's moving along. And the project was so significant, not only to Temple and to all of us who've worked so hard on that. It, it also is significant in the eyes of the nation. So Business Facilities Magazine, which is a leading publication for site selectors and site selection consultants, the folks who are oftentimes leading the decision-making matrix and process on these investments, noted SEI and Temple as the foreign direct investment deal of the year, the Deal Impact of the Year Award. And so that's quite significant. And you'll see our governor there in Korea as we made the announcement to the world, and also some of the executives with the SEI Group as well. So with that, I, I wanted to show a little bit, a little video of the good time we had there in October, turning dirt with the company representatives. So it was a really nice event. Folks came in from Korea. We were happy to receive them on that day. This is a very different project. We have been reached out to by an investor in the community on a building space that they had available. They've had a hard time filling. And through one of the marketing events that our VP had attended, he identified a, a project for, that would go into that facility that had really been in disrepair and not filled in, in some years. And we brought a four-hundred-thousand-dollar project in there, a small number of jobs, but it, again, took care of the investment of one of our local investors and made sure that we took, it was really an infield project, took a dilapidated building, a building that wasn't in good shape, and brought some new investment and created a few jobs with respect to that project. And then CHEP, and I appreciate the mayor on a cold and rainy day, we went out there and trounced in mud. I think I still have mud on my loafers, mayor, in the utility closet at home. But we went out there and turned the dirt on CHEP Manufacturing, who manufactures pallets. And if, if you see a blue pallet in a warehouse anywhere in America, it probably came from CHEP. They have about ninety percent of those pallets are colored blue in the US, Spanish-based company, and it really was an opportunity. They were located essentially in a neighborhood of the community, and I know at the executive board level, the board level of the EDC, we talked about this and how we should support this project to really get it out of that neighborhood, all those trucks out of that neighborhood and into the appropriate place, which is in our industrial park. And what you see there is one of the latest drone capture photos of the site. They are moving very, very quickly. They've moved dirt. They're setting up the pad, laying cement and, and going. So we've retained some jobs because that project was looking at moving out of the, the region altogether. So we're able to retain the twenty-seven jobs there, but also with the expansion, they have a bigger facility, more efficient use of space. And so they're actually going to add about nineteen jobs in that project as well. And so as we close out, I always like to give you a snapshot of the work that, that, or at least the level of interest and where that interest is coming from with respect to industry in the past year. And so forty-seven projects worked. And you look at the breakdown, manufacturing is really leading the way. And as I suggested, we've gotten to off to a really, really quick start in two thousand and twenty-five. I, I think there's an opportunity anyway to have significant announcements of investment as well as job creation as we go forward. And before I open it up for any questions from the council, just again, I have to extend my appreciation and my thanks for not only our elected officials who allow us to do this, who support the work, who actually support it through a lot of meetings. You know, every other week on Thursday night is not the only time you're meeting on city business. It's every day of the week. And sometimes at ten, eleven, twelve o'clock at night, I recognize that. So we appreciate our elected officials for participating in the economic development story, but also our city team members. I mean, they're at the dais here. I mean, Bren, Tracy, Kathy, and there's a number, a whole team, an army behind them that absolutely put economic development at the forefront of the priority list. So Bren, I want to thank you for your leadership specifically and that of all of your team as well. So we appreciate the support, appreciate the partnership, and really look forward to a fantastic, fantastic two thousand and twenty-five.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Counsel, anything for Adrian? It's, um, obviously, we appreciate the work that you guys do. Many times I don't think the residents of Temple or anywhere really, they, they don't understand that the, the impact that economic development has on them. You know, normally our industrial parks are tucked away somewhere, you know, and there's a lot of city mice coming and going, not a lot of just residential traffic. But the great thing about what you guys do is that you, you, because of the tax base that's created, we are able to have more amenities around town that are ultimately are paid for on the back of these industries that come here versus on the back of the residents. And those bedroom communities are a great place to be if you can afford to, to live there because of your property tax. And so having a strong economic development corporation helps us balance out the, the burden of the, of the tax rate. And so we thank you for your good work over there. We know you're focused. We know you're intentional. And you're, you're the Temple Economic Development Corporation with you as, as the leader is really making a difference for our residents. And so just thank you for the, the good work that you guys do. You're a good partner. We trust you, and we know that you're out there working every day for the, for the benefit of the, of the resident. So thank you for what you do.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it.
Very much.
Thank you all.
All right. Very good. Thank you for your report. All right. Moving on to the, the next item, which is the Consent Agenda. All items on the Consent Agenda are to be considered routine by the City Council and may be enacted by one motion. If discussion is desired by the council, any item can be removed from the Consent Agenda at the request of that council member and will be considered separately. The, the Consent Agenda tonight consists of items four A through four T. And counsel, we did discuss in workshop about removing a couple of those items. We're going to remove item Q and item S tonight for separate consideration. So other than those items, is there anything else that needs to be removed for a separate consideration? Everybody good? All right. Then counsel, I'll entertain a motion on items four A through four T. Less item Q and item S.
I move to approve items A through T minus Q and S.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Grant. We have a second by Councilmember Pilkington. Counsel, please cast your vote. Right about that. Yes, the Consent Agenda passes four votes to zero. Moving on to item Q on the Consent Agenda is to consider adopting a resolution of support for an age-restricted housing tax credit project by Brownstone Affordable Housing Limited in the form of fee waivers not to exceed five hundred dollars. We were informed during the workshop that Brownstone has removed their application for consideration, and therefore we will table item Q. I'll entertain a motion to table item Q at this time.
I'll make a motion to table item Q.
We have a motion by Councilmember Walker. We have a, a second by Councilmember Grant. Counsel, please cast your vote. Item four Q is tabled with a vote of four votes to zero. Moving on to item S is to consider adopting a resolution approving a contract for the purchase of the downtown Texel Office Building and two associated parking lots and authorizing closing costs associated with the purchase in an estimated total not to exceed amount of three million, three hundred twenty-five thousand dollars, as well as declare an official intent to reimburse a portion of the expenditure with the issuance of the two thousand and twenty-five utility revenue bonds. Counsel, if there are no questions or comments on this item, then I'll entertain a motion on item four S.
I'll make a motion to approve item four S.
We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Walker. We have a second by Councilmember Grant. Counsel, please cast your vote. Item four S passes three votes yes, zero votes no, and Councilmember Pilkington abstaining. Moving on to the regular agenda is the first reading in a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance amending the firefighter classification to add six firefighter positions. Ms. Raymore.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
So a little bit of background. Under chapter one forty-three, it requires that council establishes by ordinance the classifications in both the police and fire departments, and that means also the number of positions in those classifications. So today we're asking to increase the firefighter classification by six positions. And a little bit of history on this, the addition of the six firefighters, it'll assist with reducing the overtime cost. Overtime is necessary in order to meet the staffing requirements that are, there's a minimum staffing requirement in the fire department. So these additional positions would, would assist with helping reduce that. And these positions have been recently approved by both the finance department and the city manager's office, and funding is available for them. So we're recommending that we add these six firefighter positions to the classification. And this screen here just shows you what the counts will be. We'll go up from having fifty-five firefighters to sixty-one. And I'm happy to answer any additional questions.
Good. Thank you, ma'am. Counsel, anything for Ms. Raymore? Item five is subject to a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter may do so. As you step to the podium, state your name for the record or raise your hand on the virtual platform. No? Nothing on the platform? All right. Then at this time, I'll close the public hearing, and counsel, I'll entertain a motion on item five.
I'm going to approve item five as presented.
Second it.
We have a motion by Councilmember Pilkington. We have a second by Mayor Pro Tim Walker. Counsel, please cast your vote. Item five passes four votes to zero. Moving on to item six is the first reading in a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance authorizing a voluntary annexation of nineteen point one four two plus or minus acres of land situated in the David Metter Survey abstract number five seven seven and John Cummings Survey abstract number one seven eight in the city of Temple's extraterritorial jurisdiction. Addressed as ninety-seven thirty-eight West Highway thirty-six. Since this item was added to the agenda, it's been determined that it's best to postpone this item until a, a date uncertain. So counsel, I will entertain a motion on the postponement of item number six.
I'll move to postpone item number six to a future undetermined time.
Okay.
We have a motion by Councilmember Pilkington. We have a second by Councilmember Grant. Counsel, please cast your vote. Item six passes four votes to zero. Item seven is the first reading in a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance approving a conditional use permit to allow recreational vehicle park on twenty-nine plus or minus acres located in the David Metter Survey abstract number five seventy-seven and the John Cummings Survey abstract number one seventy-eight, city of Temple, Bell County, Texas, generally located north of State Highway thirty-six and identified as Bell County Tax ID number one three zero six nine eight and one nine three one six five. This is the same property, and so we will also postpone item number seven to date uncertain. And counsel, I'll entertain a motion on item seven.
Item, I'm sorry, postpone item seven until an undetermined time.
Second it.
Have a motion by Councilmember Grant. We have a second by Mayor Pro Tim Walker. Please cast your vote. The postponement of item number seven passes four votes to zero. Item eight is the first reading in a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance authorizing a rezoning from Ag to AG with to AG with a conditional use permit for two RV spaces to plan development multifamily one in neighborhood service with the site development plan on 19.89 plus or minus acres located in the Baldwin Robertson Survey Abstract Number 17, City of Temple, Bell County, Texas. Addressed as 8570 Prairie View Road, 1814 Split P Road, and 1900 North P Ridge Road. This item is also going to be postponed. I promise there are some live agenda items tonight, but this one's going to be, we're moving right through. This one's going to be postponed again to a date uncertain, so I'll entertain a motion on item eight.
I'll make a motion to postpone item number eight to a date unknown.
Second.
You have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Walker. We have a second by Councilmember Pilkington. Council, please cast your vote. The postponement of item eight passes four votes to zero. Moving on to item nine, it's consider adopting an ordinance approving a rezoning request from Ag to General Retail on point 04 plus or minus acres located in the SP Terry Survey Abstract Number 812, City of Temple, Bell County, Texas, addressed as Two Woodland Trail in Belton, Texas. Mr. Deckman.
Good evening, Mayor. You were not going to get out of this meeting without having at least one presentation from planning.
We're going to get something done today.
You can't get rid of us that easy. So this is the first reading P and Z met on January 6th to discuss this. And this is located on Woodland Trail out along 2305. So it's out going towards the lake in the park. And you see on the right hand photo, this has been a convenience store, pizza place. You know, they're gathering in the past. They are renovating it for a convenience store and fuel sales. And as you can see on that inset in the middle, currently, the majority of the property is owned general retail. They had asked for a liquor store permit and evaluating that decide, we discovered that we needed the rezoning to be cleaned up. So I've just covered my entire presentation on one slide. This is a cleanup of the existing zoning to allow them to continue getting that building renovated and ready to open. So they provided the survey. So you can see the outline of the building and a little bit harder to see from from here. But maybe on your screen, you can see that highlighted area to the left, that that's an adjacent parcel. When it first came in, it was still being shown as a separate tract on Belcad. Although it was under the same owner, Belcad now shows it as just the single owner. So it is a cleanup. They had come in originally when they were working on bringing this back as a store to have a liquor store as well as just regular beer and wine that you would have with the gas station. Identified the need for the rezoning. As they went through the business development, asked us to put it on hold, they weren't sure they were going to go forward with the liquor store. So it sat for a little while. They came back and told me, we're not moving forward with the liquor store at this point. And the plan was to move the rezoning and the liquor store CUP together. Just made sense to do it that way. So we hadn't moved the rezoning forward until the end of last year, which is why we're here now. The existing GR zoning supports the gas station and the fuel sales or the convenience store and fuel sales. So doesn't cause any conflicts and it's in Belton ISD. So got some site photos. There's a VFW to the south. There's some existing residential to the west. And the the homes are next to that parcel that's being rezoned tonight. That's where their septic system's located. So it is important that it's part of that property. And you can see some of the the work being done, renovating the building, putting up the sign. They've been laying new pavement, concrete and asphalt. Had a conversation with the landlord today. They're applying for their permits to build the sidewalk because 2305 is shown as a community collector sidewalks are required. So they're happy to add that as well, so that progress continues to be made on this project. We did send out 10 notices, public notice to the adjacent property owners. As you can see on this map, it is in the city limits, but there is ETJ to the north and to the east. So we sent four courtesy notices to property owners in the ETJ, received two notices back. One notice was from the applicant. The other notice was from property owner just to the east. And you can see that A, right on the edge, their property just made connection with that 200 foot boundary. Both responses are in agreement and the newspaper printed notice of the public hearing on December 26th. It is compatible with the future development plan, surrounding uses and zoning. Public facilities are available. It's it's on city water and they have their septic thoroughfare and trails planned. They're working on that sidewalk for us. No conflicts with the mobility master plan, and it's not in any neighborhood planning district. So staff recommends approval of the requested rezoning from Ag to GR. And at the January 6th meeting, P and Z voted seven to zero to recommend approval. And I'll take any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Deckman. Counsel, anything for Mr. Deckman? Item nine is subject to a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak may do so or raise your hand on the virtual platform. Okay. All right, there being none, I will close the public hearing and council entertain a a motion on item nine.
Approve item nine as presented.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilmember Pilkington. We have a second by Councilmember Grant. Council, please cast your vote. Item nine passes four votes to zero. Item 10 is the first reading in a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance approving a conditional use permit to allow a recreational park on 24.826 plus or minus acres located in the Maximo Marino Survey Abstract Number 14 in the City of Temple, Texas, generally located north of State Highway 53 on the east side of Dairy Road and identified as Bell County Tax ID 76141. This this item will also be postponed to an uncertain date. So council, I'll entertain a motion on postponing item 10.
Postpone item 10 until a certain date.
Have a motion by Councilmember Grant. We have a second by Councilmember Pilkington. Council, cast your vote. The motion to table item 10 passes four votes to zero. Moving on to item 11, it's consider adopting a resolution approving the final plat of Nama's Temple Townhouses on 1.63 plus or minus acre. 22 lot, one block, one tract residential subdivision, being a replat of lot two, block one, Baker Subdivision replat number one with a developer request exception to the UDC Section 8.2.1 and 8.1.3 related to cul-de-sacs and dead end fire apparatus roads to allow a hammerhead street design located in the CS Masters Survey Abstract Number 550 in the City of Temple, Bell County, Texas, addressed as 202 North 41st Street. Mr. Chandler.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. And so here's the property located along 41st Street. This is west of I-35. It is just to the east of and and south of Salmon's Golf Course. It's on the right. You can see this would be infill development proposed with 22 townhomes. And it's kind of a mix of of residential and kind of light industrial and commercial uses within that neighborhood. And so here's the plat on the right, and it's for 1.63 acres. The 22 lots, as I mentioned before, one block, one tract. The zoning is general retail, which does allow townhomes with the dimensions of minimum lot area of 2,000 square feet, width of 20, depth of 100. Front yard setback of 15 feet, but they're going to provide 25, which gives a little bit more parking wiggle room. Side yards of of five and zero feet. You know, of course, if the attached townhomes, zero setback there. And then street side yard of 15 feet, rear yard of 10. And so in the plat, you can see that track A, as well as Rojas Avenue. That is future parking on the backside, but a private road, which is just for really the turnaround of, you know, emergency vehicles, solid waste vehicles, but then parking, overflow parking in the backside. And Nama's Way, Track A, is a private street that is in, so both private streets maintained by the development and HOA. And Track A is Nama's Way, 33 feet and then to 42 feet of width. Private drainage, top left hand corner, you can see the detention pond. Overflow parking on the backside of Rojas Way. Public utilities, city, city water and and sewer. And then, of course, Track A, Nama Way, owned and maintained by the HOA. They are also providing internal sidewalks and then a public sidewalk along 41st Street. And as I mentioned, on city water and sewer, six inch water line along 41st Street will be extended. There's an existing eight inch sewer line along 41st Street. And so access will be all on a a single point along 41st Street for these 22 units. And the hammerhead design rather than a cul-de-sac, which is what is required. And so the exception is needed. And before you, for your decision, Public Works and the Fire Department provided no objection during the development review committee process. And that's primarily due to the fact there are no homes along the backside of that hammerhead. There may be cars parked there, but so there will be no trash cans that need to be emptied along that way. And so turning around and maneuvering along Rojas Avenue becomes a little easier than some other cases that we have seen in the past. The sidewalk, no requirement for local streets, but we did work with the developer to provide that sidewalk on 41st Street for mainly for the use multifamily and and for potential future sidewalk improvements with future development or city projects. And so looking at the comprehensive plan, this area is identified as regional commercial within the future land use, which is intended to primarily support regional commercial, regionally commercial businesses, but with limited residential uses to apartments. And so this is similar certainly to a multifamily use, but certainly with the benefit of having individual yards. The thoroughfare plan, there are are no collectors or arterials within the immediate vicinity of this project. And then nothing on the Trails Master Plan, as well as no conflicts with the Mobility Master Plan. As I mentioned, the Development Review Committee did review this, and their first review was in July, July 22nd of 2024, but was determined to be administratively complete or filed per statute terminology on December 18th. And so staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission, at their January 6th meeting of this year, in which they voted seven to zero, recommend approval of the final plat and the exception. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, anything for Mr. Chandler? Okay, very good.
We just really discussed everything in workshop, and I appreciate your your diligence with that. Because I was a little concerned about the turnaround, but I think y'all were very thoughtful with what you decided to do. So thank you for working with them.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Very good. All right, counsel, with that, I'll entertain a motion on item 11.
I'll make a motion to approve item 11.
Second.
Have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Walker. We have a second by Councilmember Pilkington. Council, please cast your vote. Item 11 passes four votes to zero. Thank you all for attending tonight's meeting.